Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the October 24th, 2024 School Board Meeting for the In-Large City School District of Middletown. Before we get started, just a brief disclaimer that this agenda was prepared in advance of tonight's meeting. The final agenda for tonight's meeting is subject to change at the time of the meeting. Any changes will be noted at the time they're made and again after the meeting on the Public Board Minutes, which are available on the district's website. Esta agenda fue preparada ante la reunión de esta noche. La agenda final para la reunión de esta noche está sujeta a cambios en el momento de la reunión. Cualquier cambio se anotará en el momento en que se realice normalmente después de la reunión en las actas de la junta pública que están disponibles en el sitio web del distrito. So at this time, if we could please rise for our pledge allegiance led this evening by Mr. Freddie Williams.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could please remain standing for a couple of moments of silence, Mr. Perino.
Thank you, President Estrada. You know, some periods are more difficult than others, and this has been a very, very difficult period for members of the district and relatives of members of the district. So we do these out of respect for those individuals that have passed or who are relatives of those individuals. So I'm gonna start now. Very difficult. Alejandra Contreras, ninth grade student, Middletown High School. I did not know Alejandra, but her family and friends and classmates describe her as a kind person with a smile that could light up a room. She loved spending time with her family and friends. She loved flowers and butterflies, and her favorite color was pink. Her favorite book was The Giving Tree. Alejandra was a wonderful, sweet, loving big sister, daughter, granddaughter, cousin, and friend. She will forever be a classmate at Middletown High School. And at the visitation today, there was an outpouring of support for Alejandra and the family. It was just totally amazing. The next moment of silence is for Carol D. Roberts and Carol D. Roberts, the aunt of our superintendent, Amy Creedon. Carol was a very hardworking individual. She worked for many years in the secretarial field and then stayed home to raise her children. And after this, she worked her way up on the corporate ladder at IBM. And she also served her community after retirement. She was a member of an organization that helped women trying to get back on their feet and find a job. She ran classes at home to help them hone their skills. She volunteered for many, many activities, a very active member of her church, Sacred Heart Church. She also knew how to relax. She enjoyed trips, and she especially to Manhattan. The next moment of silence this evening. It's for Thomas Jurese Sr., father of John Jurese. John is a longtime instructor at Middletown High School. Thomas served his country, a member of the United States Marines. He was a hard worker. He had a number of careers, including a member of the Police Department. He also served in the field of technology. And again, Thomas Jurese will be missed by his family and members of the community. The next moment of silence, Allison Zavadel. She was a member of our food service staff in the old Liberty Street building. As a media coordinator, I used to visit all the buildings. I always stopped in the cafeteria to say hello to the folks working there. Very friendly, very friendly person, very respected by both students and staff, always had a smile on her face. Continuing on here for a minute. Loretta Orsley. Worked with Loretta. She was a guidance counselor at Middletown High School, and she also, before that, she was an instructor of history. Very pleasant individual, Loretta. Good memories about her. If there was a committee assignment, you needed somebody, she was the one to go to, not a clock watcher. She would stay there until the job is done. And interestingly enough, she was also a very good golfer. Loretta Orsley, longtime guidance counselor, member of the staff. The final moment of silence this evening, and I just found this out. Brooke Philippini's mom, and Brooke is here tonight, passed away October 16th, 66 years Did not know her. I've known Brooke for many years. Now, I read you this. Barbara was passionate about many things about her life. She had a great sense of humor. She loved a good laugh, enjoying a great meal, and most of all, spending time with her family. Throughout the years, she has loved and cared for many animals, including her birds, horses, chickens, cats, and her two beloved dogs, Daisy and Missy. So please remember all these individuals and your thoughts and prayers. As I said, this has been a very, very difficult time for the district. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Perino, and I do want to acknowledge, Mr. Perino does our moments of silence at each and every meeting, and as you can see from his binder, he does a lot of work in trying to pay the utmost respect for them at our school board meetings. So I do want to thank Mr. Perino for that as well. So we move on to our mission of the In-Large City School District of Middletown. Mr. Moore.
Yes. We strive to provide a fiscally sound educational opportunities and a safe environment that continuously support our diverse student population. We will enable all students to graduate and to reach their full potential to become lifelong learners and to be competitive and productive members of society.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Roll call, Ms. Marcherie.
Mr. Estrada.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Perino.
Here.
Mr. Rett.
Ms. Romero.
Ms. Tobiasin.
Mr. Freddie Williams.
Here.
Pastor Williams.
Mr. Mitchell Williams.
Yeah.
And most of you must be saying, where is the rest of the school board? It's one of those timing issues tonight. Ms. Tobiasin is enjoying vacation. I think she's in Venice today. Ms. Rett unfortunately had an injury earlier today and could not attend. Pastor Williams is covering a funeral in Pennsylvania, and Ms. Romero had a professional event this evening. So they all have good excuses to not be here tonight. Moving on, I need an approval for tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Freddie Williams. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Before we get started into agenda, just a brief statement on behalf of the Board of Education. As Mr. Perino outlined during the moments of silence, this is a very difficult week for our school community here in Middletown. We lost one of our students on Friday, Alejandra Contreras. Her service was today between 5:00 and 7:00. Many in the school community, including many here at these tables, went earlier today to pay our respects to the family. And when we left, there was obviously a humongous line still waiting to come in to pay their respects to the Contreras family. With that being said, I am so proud of our school community. For our board members, we wake up each and every day, all 7,000-plus of our students are part of our family. And it's never easy when we have to wake up and find out that we've lost someone. And it's very important that all of you know how proud you should be of your administrators, your teachers, your faculty members. As soon as we found out the information on Friday, the crisis management team went into effect immediately. They were here until the wee hours on Saturday morning. They were here on Saturday for our kids. We had about 200 to 300 students show up at the high school on Saturday to release balloons along with family members. They were so proud of their fellow students coming out in support of their daughter. The school opened up again on Sunday for some more students to come in, and then we had crisis counselors from throughout the region come both to Middletown High School as well as Mont Hagen Middle School, as Alejandra has a sibling at Mont Hagen, and spend time throughout this entire week, and I think they'll be here throughout the rest of the week in support of our students. I do want to thank, obviously, not only our administrators and our staff members here, but school districts cannot go through this alone because, obviously, many of our staff, our support staff, and our faculty, and our administrators are emotionally involved with our students. So with that being said, we do get help from throughout Orange County, and I want to give a nice shout-out to the school districts of Chester, Cornwall, Florida, Goshen, Marlborough, Menacing Valley, Monroe Woodbury, Newburgh, Pine Bush, Port Jervis, Tuxedo, Valley Central, Warwick, Washingtonville, and Orange Ulster Boses. All of them provided staff that were here throughout the weekend in support of our students. Also grateful, as you see in our statement, which is on the school district website, to the city of Middletown, the Middletown Police Department, Mid-City Transit, the Orange County Department of Mental Health, Brighton Beautiful, Paws for Cause Therapy Dogs, and our other first responders, as well as our religious institutions here in the community who all came out to help. We had eight therapy dogs here over the weekend in support of our students and staff. So yes, a moment in silence for our condolences to the Contreras family, but let's give a great round of applause for all of the support that they've received throughout this weekend. Thank you for allowing me to make that statement. So I need an approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th, 2024.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Mitchell Williams, seconded by Mr. Perino. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. I need approval for action item Personnel Memorandum 9A, Number 1 Administrative.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Perino. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. I need approval for Personnel Memorandum 9B, Numbers 1 through 15, Instructional.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Mitchell Williams, seconded by Mr. Moore. All those in favor?
Discussion on that, Mr. Perino.
Discussion, Mr. Perino.
Thank you. Yes, I'll be voting for all items on the Personnel Memorandum except Number 9B-12.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? With the exception of Mr. Perino's for 9B-12. Motion carries five zero on all motions with the exception of 9B-12, which carries by a vote of four to one. Moving on to approval of Personnel Memorandum 9C, Numbers 1 through 7, Non-Instructional. Moved by Mr. Mitchell Williams, seconded by Mr. Perino. All those in favor? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. I need approval for Financial Memorandum 9D, Numbers 1 through 4. Moved by Mr. Freddie Williams, seconded by Mr. Mitchell Williams. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. I need approval for Special Services Memorandum 9E, Numbers 1 through 3.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded by Mr. Moore. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. I need approval for Change Orders 6F, Numbers 1 through 3.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Mitchell Williams, seconded by Mr. Perino. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. What we're gonna do next is we have the New York State School Boards Association Area 9 Director Vote. There are two candidates before this body. One is Mr. John Burns from the Ellenville School District, and the second is our own Pastor John Williams from Middletown. We'll take a vote first. I would need a motion and then a second, and then a vote on if we're going to vote on the individual. So the first one will be Mr. John Burns from Ellenville. Is there a motion? Seeing no motion, we go on to our second individual. I'll need a motion to approve as Area 9 Director, Pastor John Williams from Middletown.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded by Mr. Mitchell Williams. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Five zero. Let's give Pastor Williams, even though he's not here, a nice round of applause. For those of you who don't know, Area 9 Director represents all school districts in Sullivan and Orange County at the state level. He will need the vote of the majority of all school districts within those counties in order to receive that directorship. So we'll give, obviously, he's got our vote from here in Middletown, and we'll give you an update as we hear from other school districts at our next school board meeting. I believe it would be the first time in the history of our school district where we would have the representative at the state be from Middletown, so good luck to Pastor Williams. Now, I need an approval for the following resolution for Employee Number 09278. Before the motion and the second, I'm gonna have Vice President Mitch Williams read the resolution. It's a long one.
Whereas disciplinary charges of misconduct and incompetence dated August 1st, 2024 were preferred against Employee Number 09278 by Superintendent of Schools Amy Creedon pursuant to Section 75 of the Civil Service Law. The disciplinary charges end. Whereas by resolution dated August 15th, 2024, the Board of Education appointed Carol Mineo to serve as the Hearing Officer with regard to the disciplinary charges against Employee Number 09278, directed Ms. Mineo to hold a hearing pursuant to Section 75 of the Civil Service Law, and directed Ms. Mineo to submit the record of such hearing to the Board of Education with her findings of fact and recommendations as to penalty, if any, for review and final decision by the Board of Education. End. Whereas on or about September 19th, 2024, a hearing pursuant to Civil Service Law, Section 75, was held where the district employee Number 09278 presented evidence and testimony was taken collectively, the record. End. Whereas on or about September 26th, 2024, the district submitted a post-hearing brief to Hearing Officer Mineo. End. Whereas Employee Number 09278 did not submit a post-hearing brief. End. Whereas on or about October 21st, 2024, Hearing Officer Mineo submitted to the Board of Education for its review and decision her written findings of fact and recommendation penalty, opinion, and award. End. Whereas Hearing Officer Mineo found Employee Number 09278 guilty of all six charges and recommended he be terminated from employment. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education clarifies stated issues in the Hearing Officer's opinion and award and determines that the hearing was held pursuant to Section 75 of the Civil Service Law as erected by the Board of Education by resolution dated August 15th, 2024, and has set forth in the disciplinary charges served upon Employee Number 09278. End. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education determines that there is substantial evidence in the record supporting the Hearing Officer's factual findings and hereby adopts the Hearing Officer's findings of fact and adopts the Hearing Officer's recommendations that Employee Number 09278 was guilty of all six disciplinary charges. End. Be it further resolved, the Board of Education hereby adopts Hearing Officer Mineo's recommended penalty and terminates Employee 09278 employment within the district effective October 25th,
Thank you, Mr. Mitch Williams. I need a motion. Moved by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Freddie Williams. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. We'll move on to our board member recognitions and our community updates. I'm gonna start off first with if board members have any of their own recognitions or community updates that they'd like to go. We'll start off with Mr. Freddie Williams first.
I'm gonna talk a little bit about our NISBA trip over the weekend. Myself, Mr. Ed Estrada, Mr. Andrew Moore, Mr. John Williams, Mr. Curtis Rett, and Ms. Romero went down.
I do want to mention Mr. John Perino.
Oh, yes, and Mr. Perino, yeah, he was right, virtually, yep. He was here, and the rest of us headed down to New York City, and it was the Hilton, Midtown Hilton, I believe. Great experience. We, this is the second year where we put out like a pretty strong number. Last year, we had five, go to Buffalo. This year, we had six. And just the praise and acknowledgement we got from the other districts was awesome. Lets us know we're doing the right thing here in Middletown. And, you know, to further our education as board members, you can never have enough of that. Sat in some great seminars and had, you know, great experiences with my fellow trustees. We got to, you know, get to know each other a little better, you know, in a different environment. So it was really, really cool. So I think next week I have some pictures. I think we gotta do like a photo dump. We took a lot of pictures out there. So that was that, and it was an awesome experience. Secondly, I would like to, on the community side, I'm sitting with the city of Middletown, and they're gonna, they're finalizing their tree lighting ceremony, so I'll have that information soon. And with my business, Six West Barber Shop, we have the food drive that starts immediately after Halloween, and then it turns into the toy drive and the coat drive. So I'll have some more information on that our next meeting, and that's what I have. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freddie Williams. Mr. John Perino.
Thank you, President Estrada. As Fred Williams mentioned, I was present for the conference, but I did the conference virtually. I'll tell you, that was a very interesting experience. As I said to Ed, I have a whole notebook loaded with materials on that. But it was interesting because in all the courses I've taken, bachelor's, graduate courses, postgraduate, I've never had a kind of a course like this because it went from 8:00 to approximately 5:30, no breaks, no breaks, no lunch breaks, no nothing breaks. I mean, just kept going, which was good. I liked the fast pace. The moderator kept the whole conference moving virtually, and that was Monday and Tuesday, we had another session. So I wanna, what I wanna do, I wanna thank Crystal Marcherie, our district clerk, for setting the whole thing up for me, and also the technicians, Paul Fox and Josh Beltran, and Josh is here tonight, I believe. They did a very good job keeping the computer and the TV running throughout the day. And, you know, that brings me to my next point in the little time I have left, our IT division. And not too many people say too much about it because everything goes so smoothly with that division. They service over 10,000 computers, over 10,000 computers. Additionally, they have an important role to play in keeping the HVAC systems running, which are going toward being computerized. Also, the locks on the doors. They take care of them, and they service these in many respects. So I just want to give credit to not only Paul Fox and Josh tonight, but I want to keep, give credit to Kevin Leonis, the technical manager, and the Nikki Leak, the applications current manager, and all the staff. I know Richie Walters, when I have any trouble with my computer, he's always there with advice and so on. So nice job to the IT department, and members are here, of course, tonight. The other thing I want to kind of key on this evening, there are many things I could talk about, but it's been quite a long day. I want to give a shout-out to members of our security team and Lenny Zapka, the head of our team, Dave Coats, who's also here tonight, the Middletown Police Department, the MHS Administration, for making our evening football games go very, very smoothly and providing a nice, safe environment. I was at the Newburgh game. No incidents at all. Everybody was having a good time. The second game with Valley Central, the same thing. You know, even though we didn't win the Newburgh game, our team played very hard and showed good sportsmanship and being well-coached. So again, congratulations to these. And Ed Estrada, does he announce at the games? He's always there, so thank you very much. I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. I think you got the short end of the stick because when we were in the city, we were allowed breaks, so you were the only one that even got a break. But thank you for being part of it. And for the community, we'll all have reports about the conference and which seminars we attended and stuff at a future board meeting. So, Mr. Moore.
I have a couple of things. First, I wanted to commend the district and then also the high school staff for, you know, challenging through this tough time that we're dealing with. And it's not easy to, you know, leave for the weekend and then come back on a Monday after hearing such tragedy that we have to face. So I just wanted to take some time to really just acknowledge all the teachers and the staff and the personnel for over the weekend and just being able to, you know, refocus and regroup, to be able to come in on Monday and in this whole entire week just to be able to, you know, fight back your tears and your pain and still be able to focus and have the mission that we strive for to continue with the district. So I just want to take a time to say that. Crystal, did you get a chance to get the pictures? Oh, all right. You could put them up. Now I could just talk about it pretty quickly. All right, cool. So this was just some of the highlights from our trip. I'm not gonna dive too much, but I got a chance to get Ed to stop over at the lookout for the first time in his life to be able to see the city from our point of view as we drove back up here to Middletown. Was definitely a good experience. And just to highlight Pastor John and also Ed Estrada for a great session that they had at the conference, which I'll dive into. This is actually today. I'm not sure if you guys had a chance to see the parade today, but this is some of the team, my kids that play for New York's Finest. They had the opportunity to get interviewed by pretty much every news channel today and had a chance to meet a lot of the players as well. So it was just a huge highlight from today, and although they miss school, but they actually was a part of history. And this is just from a session that really stood out from this past weekend. Ed and John had the opportunity to speak about the past and the present of the Middletown School District, and it was powerful because as Middletown grows, and I'm, you know, a beneficiary of having an opportunity to come here, you know, post the trying times that the district has faced, and now to be able to see us get over this hump, they got a great opportunity to speak to pretty much a packed room and discuss a lot of the challenges that was faced in the past and where we are going now in the future and how much people really took, you know, emphasis to where we are now, how we can be able to get there. So it was a huge highlight. And this is some other pictures. I don't want to hold it up too much, but I think that was it, right? And that was just some of the other highlights that we shared from today, but that's about it. Thank you.
Those pictures are great. When you can show our kids something like a victory parade, like Liberty, and I'm sure, I'm not a Yankee fan, but if Yankee fans out there want another one later on, hey, I'm not, I'm just saying, you know, if they have their parade, you know, more opportunities for our kids to. more opportunities for our kids to, to go down.
As a Mets fan, you know, they-
Yeah. We'll have our chance. Mr. Mitch Williams. You're good. Alright, we'll move on to our next recognition, and I'm gonna hand it off to Mr. Perino for our Elks Student of the Month.
Thank you, President Estrada. I'd like to call up Ashley Merchant and our Student of the Month, and, uh, Errol Odom, who is representing the Elks tonight, right up there, Errol.
Good evening, I'm Board of Educations, we're attending Creedon. Um, today I'm gonna present Isaiah Gomez, our Elks Student of the Month. Give a little round of applause for Isaiah.
Are his parents here?
Yes, can they-
So they can come up too? So they can stand behind him?
We have the whole family here.
Absolutely. Is that abuela and abuelo?
Yeah, abuelo, yeah, abuelo.
Alright.
Yeah, so our, our cohort is very proud of Isaiah. He just transferred up here to Middletown, and he has been making great strides with us. Um, I met him during open house, super sweet family, um, it was about his yonder pouch. But, you know, it was great to introduce him, get him used to our expectations here at the high school. And he just amazed me from that short time, just talking with him and his mom, and, and he would check in with me throughout the week. And one day, he was like, "Ms. Merchant, I haven't seen you for a while." I was like, "I haven't seen you either," but it was really nice that, you know, he gave me a hug. A very sweet kid, and, um, I got to know him, and so I, we were talking about some of, you know, some of his attributes, and I'm just gonna read a little bit about what Isaiah and I spoke about. Um, Isaiah's favorite subject is physical education because he loves running. He draws inspiration from his mother, admiring her strength and perseverance. He also aspires to be an Olympic swimmer like Michael Phelps. He wants to beat Michael Phelps' records. Um, he also enjoys competing in swim meets and stays motivated by seeking advice when facing challenges. Um, he also gave a shout out to his Global Studies teacher, Mr. Radcliffe. Um, he said that he has had a positive impact on his life, making learning fun and enjoyable. Currently, Isaiah's main goal is to make the swim team and improve his stamina. So, you know, our cohort, we're rooting for him, that he makes the swim team. So this is Isaiah Gomez.
Hello, nice to meet you. I'm Isaiah Gomez, obviously, but, um, yes, I grew up in the city and it was a struggle 'cause I recently moved here to this new school. And I would like to thank my principal for a warm welcome since I recently moved. Um, I want to thank God for watching over me, making sure I was safe, and making sure that I was okay. I also want to thank my family for always guiding me in the right direction every day.
So, Isaiah, so you a sprinter? Do you run fast, or you like distance better?
I like everything. If it's running, then I like it.
Alright, well, listen, when you do beat Mike Phelps' record, don't forget us here at Middletown.
I won't.
Okay. Congratulations, and we're, we're glad that you're having a great time at Middletown.
Thank you so much.
Isaiah, we have a certificate for you, and you're gonna get another certificate, and Mr. Odom's gonna present this officially.
Most definitely. You made me proud just to hear all the accomplishments that you have. And on behalf of the Elks Middletown Lodge, I'd like to present this award. It says, "Elks Club Student of the Month" to Isaiah Gomez, Grade Nine, October twenty-fourth.
I think next you're going to get some photos. Uh, let's see. Okay. You wanna go over there? Okay. Wants the whole family go up ahead?
Go over, yeah.
Go ahead.
Thank you so much again for the Elks. You guys are awesome, as usual. Helping us out. Yeah, Kevin's doing a photo in a different area. That's okay. Um, so next, uh, I think you still have the floor, Mr. Perino, for our Veterans Stand Down.
Okay, thank you. Yes, uh, I'm gonna call, uh, Chief Slingerlin up, and the cadets, come on up. I just asked Chief Slingerlin, how many hours has the NGOTC put in? He mentioned this at the passing review, but I, I, I was, I just wanted to check. And the truth is, since July, since July, NGOTC cadets have put in over twenty-two-hundred hours of community service. How about that? And these folks were present at the Veterans Stand Down, and people wonder, well, what's a Veterans Stand Down? So a Veterans Stand Down is basically to honor the veterans. Uh, at the Stand Down, uh, there are a number of giveaways, including clothing. Uh, they have, uh, free haircuts. Uh, additionally, I didn't have too much to cut here, but, uh, the, the person who was doing this trimmed my beard up a little bit. So they have free haircuts, they have advice, financial advice, they have a nice meal, uh, for the veterans, various demonstrations. And the cadets were part of this and making this a success. So we have certificates. I'm going to ask, uh, there's some of the, there's a photo of this. There's other photos, which hopefully maybe I'll have the, at the next meeting. But these are some of the cadets, uh, presenting the colors. And, uh, I'm gonna go back to my seat and get my, uh, get your certificates, Chief, and then you can call out the names. How about that?
Sounds good.
Do you wanna say anything very quickly?
Yes, uh, thank you, Board of Ed, for recognizing the, uh, wonderful things that the cadets do. They, they really are an inspiration, proud of everything that they do. Um, what, uh, John didn't mention is the, uh, Veterans Stand Down Coordinator, uh, asks us to put together leather, uh, kits for the veterans that go in each bag. And, uh, we found out real quick that some of the cadets, uh, are really good at sewing, and some of them are, uh, in need of a little bit of extra guidance. Uh, I believe, uh, our XO did, uh, like thirty, forty of those pouches herself, uh, fixing some of the, uh, things that, uh, were done, uh, incorrectly. But, uh, it's always a great time for the, uh, cadets to be with the veterans and, and learn about their, their story, and, uh, some of the, the cadets really do, uh, enjoy hearing about what, what the veterans do.
I also wanna, I do wanna congratulate you also on the passing review. Unfortunately, I couldn't go because of, uh, my paying job needed me for some reason, but nevertheless.
Bandable.
Um, I know Curtis Rhett would have made a comment. He was there, and he told me over the weekend that was a very, uh, a, a great ceremony, and he wanted to send his congratulations.
Thank you, yes. Um, uh, the inspector said that, uh, we have set the standard for the rest of the schools that are going after us. This was, uh, we were our, we were the first school on his, uh, tour of inspections, and, uh, uh, he's at, he was at North Rockland today, and I called the instructor at North Rockland and apologized and said, "Sorry for, uh, uh, what you are now being graded on," so.
Okay, so without further ado, why don't you call the names?
Yes, sir.
And then, uh, you, we'll, uh-
Alright, uh, first cadet, Natalie Acevedo. Elijah Aponte. Genesis Campos. Uh, she could not be here tonight, Guadalupe Delarosa Cuenca. Adamaris Flores Mejia. Who also just came from a soccer match. Juan Gonzalez could not be with us tonight, Xavier Hall. Indrapri Cor could not be with us tonight. Haley McNamara, our resident seamstress. Brian Morales. Maria Preciado Herrera. Angelique Quijano Colon could not be here with us tonight. Aiden Rodriguez. Camila Rodriguez Florentino. Diana Sanchez and Isaiah Weeks-Brighton could not be here tonight. Last but not least, Elizabeth Zeeman. Oh, not last but not least. There's one hiding behind here, Anthony Mensia. Who was afraid that he was gonna have to come up and say his speech as well. That's it. That's, uh, that's everybody on our list. Thank you so much. Yes, yes? Thank you.
You know, I always say this, uh, Chief Slingerlin was one of my first students when I started teaching way, way back.
I remember you, uh, visiting Liberty Street.
Well, here you go. A good student, yeah.
Always. Thank you.
John, are you gonna stay up there for the Elks Hoop Shoot introduction? Sure.
Do you call Errol Odom up? Come on up here, Errol.
First, I'd like to acknowledge the youngsters who come out to always help the Elks. As, um, we do different things, we're under manned. Well, I ain't gonna say we're under manned, we, they're not as young as they used to be. So these youngsters come out to assist us all the time. Um, I was originally invited here to speak about the thing that I do know about, and that's basketball. And, uh, we have a hoop shoot. You don't have to be a ball player to shoot free throws. I played against cats that never made it to the NBA Hall of Fame. This is a chance to give our kids in the area a chance to make it into the Hall of Fame of the NBA. And it's simple, it's, uh, free throws. I have a daughter who's a officer in the Navy now. She played at, uh, three colleges before going into the Navy, into the Navy. And I used to get off early in the morning, and it'd be like eighty when we get out there, but about ninety, ninety-five degrees when we started, shooting free throws. Free throw games, there's ballplayers here. Uh, Freddie over there, Mitch, they do things. No games are won on the free throw line, won and lost on the free throw line. So I try to encourage our kids, if they're not a ball player, you don't have to be. All you have to do is shoot free throws and make them. So you start here locally, then you go to the division, then you go to the state. You get past the state, you go to Chicago, we send you out there, and you play against the country. And it's fun. Kids love it. They get to meet other kids from other areas. It don't have to be a ball player. You don't have to be perfect. Just go out there and have fun. Uh, last year, we had a, we got very close with a young man named Donovan. I call him my nephew. Donovan made it all the way to the state, and he got to meet a lot of people. But along the way, he had a lot of trophies on the way 'cause he had to zigzag across New York State playing the other divisions and the other teams, representatives. We had good fun. We went up, it was, uh, pouring rain when we went up there. But we had fun getting up there. It was right outside of Syracuse we had to go. And he made it to the state. This year, he promised me we're gonna go to Chicago.
There you go.
And I got friends in Chicago, so I'm looking for that. But if you have grandkids or grandkids, we'll be at the YMCA here in Middletown on Saturday, November second, at ten AM in the morning. We'll be, it's three hours, you can get there early, 'cause I'm an early person, to get your kids registered. And I would like to thank my longtime friend for getting the posters, over thirty years, yes.
Freddie Williams, uh-
Fred, oh, please, I don't wanna talk about all these guys.
Yeah.
You know, I remember when, don't cover up your face, Mitch, you can't hide. You know, but, um, I look forward to you bringing your kids out. We're gonna have some fun. You don't have to be professional. Don't worry about losing or winning, 'cause just being a part of it, you're winning. And again, I'd like to thank the cadets and their commander over there. Hey, wait a minute, we got a haircut at the same time. What happened?
I, I think I took your spot in line.
See, that's why I was calling you, Freddie.
Thank you, Errol.
But anyway, thank you guys for your time.
And Fred Williams' son went how far?
He went all the way to the state.
State, yeah.
Went to state, right? That's it. Yeah, where he challenged about, I think it's, uh, seventeen?
Yeah, if I could chime in really quick, it was a great experience. I wanna thank the Elks Lodge again. Um, that's something he'll never forget. Yeah, I think he went to the fourth round, which was the state, and one step short of Chicago. So he's been, uh, that's a little chip on his shoulder, so we've been working on it, and, uh-
There you go.
He's ready, yeah, he's ready. I appreciate the Elks Lodge. Thank you, guys.
Anytime, and I appreciate-
Thanks, Joe.
-you guys and your time.
And I know Drew Moore, sitting over there, he does a lot with basketball with the young people in the district, correct, Drew?
Correct.
He's always at the Presidential, right?
Yep.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. So next up, we have our public participation and opportunity to address the board. The board will designate a portion of its meeting agenda for public comment for a period, period of up to forty minutes. Each speaker will be allowed up to four minutes. The public is not permitted to discuss topics and/or matters involving specific individuals, and speakers must sign in prior to speaking. Speakers are not permitted to cede their time to other speakers. And as I've mentioned in previous school board meetings, we will, uh, make sure we have decorum and civil language up at the microphone. Any inappropriate language will mean an automatic cutoff of your microphone, and this is the only warning you get in that regard. La Junta designará una parte de su agenda de reunión para comentario público por un periodo periodo de hasta cuarenta minutos. A cada persona se permitirá hasta cuatro minutos. No se permite al público discutir temas y o asuntos que involucren una persona específica. Las personas deben registrarse, firmar antes de hablar, y las personas no pueden ceder su tiempo a otras personas. So with that in mind, would anybody like to address the board at this time? No? Wow, this is a first for me. Any letters to the Board of Education, Ms. Monshery? No letters. So we'll move on to our superintendent's updates. Two items that she'll be discussing tonight, National Red Ribbon Week and our construction update.
Great, thank you, President Estrada. Before we get into Red Ribbon Week and our construction updates, I wanted to just acknowledge the terribly, you know, sad feelings that our entire school community has over the loss of Alejandra Contreras. She was a beautiful young woman, a ninth grader here at Middletown High School with a brilliant smile. And so I wanted to make sure that we took time to continue to care for one another, support Alejandra's family in what will be a very long journey, and thank our school community and our broader community for their heartfelt support, prayers, compassion. It is in moments like these when a school community and a community come together to uplift one another and provide comfort and understanding to those who need it. And I am honored to work alongside people who continue to pour their heart and soul into the work that we do in this lovely community. So I want to make sure that we extend our warmest, warmest thanks to all those who have sent a message, come out and supported us, provided a resource, volunteered their time, or checked in on someone who needed to be checked in on. I also want to just take this moment to acknowledge that, you know, mental health is something that we need to be talking about very openly. We are very blessed in the school community to have access to a tremendous volume of resources. And so if you or someone you know are in need of support, please reach out and ask or access some of the resources that are available on our website. Thank you.
And I do want to add briefly, for those of you who are not aware, there is a GoFundMe campaign via Facebook. If you'd like to go on there and contribute to help alleviate some of the funeral expenses for the family. So we encourage you to go on there and help them out as best you can.
And just lastly, you know, it would be remiss of me not to acknowledge, you know, our young people and the courageous way in which they showed up for one another, and I'm sure will continue to show up for one another. On Saturday, two hundred and fifty young people and their families came to Middletown High School in the evening and, you know, very warmly embraced one another and released balloons to honor Alejandra's memory and her bright smile. And it was just very moving to see our young people come together in that way, in such a caring manner. So I want to make sure that they get the acknowledgement of how challenging this is for them and that even through, you know, this darkness, they are finding ways to support one another. So thank you. And so what I would like to do now is call attention to another really important matter, which is National Red Ribbon Week, which provides our young people and community an opportunity to amplify the importance of education and camaraderie around, you know, maintaining a drug-free school, community, and home. And so I want to invite Ashley Pace, Belinda Hodler, Wendy George, Brooke Philippini, and Christine Dumay up to the microphone to share all that has been happening leading up to Red Ribbon Week and what they've been doing to celebrate.
Did I do it? Okay. Good evening, everyone. We are excited to share with you with the community, with the board, and Ms. Creedon, what we have been doing to celebrate National Red Ribbon Week. It is the nation's largest and longest-running drug-use prevention campaign that takes place each year at the end of October. Since its beginning, parents, educators, and students began wearing red ribbons as a symbol of their commitment to raise awareness of the dangers and harm of drug use and a focus on healthy life choices. So every year, a theme is chosen. It is a contest, and it's voted upon. So this year, the theme is "Life as a Movie: Film Drug-Free." So our activities are related to this and our focus for schools and districts to engage students in awareness about healthy living and a drug-free life. So during the week, we started on Monday with everybody wearing red. And then we went to Tuesday, which was team building to be drug-free. So everybody teamed up against drugs, so they wore their favorite team shirts. Wednesday, they dressed up like movie stars. And when you see, you'll see pictures, we have kids all dressed up with a backdrop. We had props. And they all dropped, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, there we go. Okay, so you can see that they dressed up like a movie star. On Thursday, we had Be a Hero. So today was a superhero day. And everybody dressed up as their favorite superhero. And then now tomorrow, everybody will have their Midi Pride gear on to do that. So as some activities that we did, we're gonna skip this one because, yeah, we talked about that and we'll go back to the elementary.
Okay. Hi, I'm Brooke Philippini. I'm one of the assistant principals at Maple Hill, if you didn't know who I was. It has been so great at the elementary level, seeing the little kids dressed up and celebrating red ribbon. So one of the things that we did was team up with Food Services, who came up with a menu specifically for this week, which was kind of cool. So they came up with some items like Blockbuster Breakfast Bites, Cinema Fruit Snacks, New York State Cinema Slushy, and Hollywood Hummus Cups. So it was great to pair up with Food Services because I think that everybody in the community, in the school community, should be involved and know, you know, what is going on. And on their menu, you can see that they also acknowledged with Red Ribbon Week on there, so. We're gonna skip over that one. So at the elementary level, we did, we had different activities that the students did. So they kicked off on the Monday where they were red, so they all had red bands. We had coloring sheets that they could do. They had read alouds that they can take, you know, that the teachers could read to them in the class. In our older groups, the fourth and fifth graders, they worked on taking pledges about being drug-free, and they hung their signs up in the hallway. Like yesterday, like I said, they dressed up like a movie star. We had a photo booth set up in the cafeteria during their lunchtime, so they had props and they took pictures. And then they had just some coloring sheets. And then tomorrow, we'll be just showing their Midi Pride. And here are some of the pictures. If you can see in some of our elementaries, the kids are, just different activities that they did. Dressed up with all their little props. And then at the middle school.
Hello, everybody. My name is Belinda Hodler. I'm a dean of students at Monhegan. So for the middle school, we also participated in the Spirit Wear Week. So that's been very fun to see. We had on Monday and Tuesday scholars, if they chose to sign a pledge to live a healthy and drug-free lifestyle, which we hung up around the cafeteria walls. And then students also received a bracelet for that as well. So today and tomorrow, we'll be continuing to do our photo booth, our photo backdrop. And then at the middle school level, we also have the opportunity for scholars to submit to the poster contest and the essay contest, which is open to all of Orange County. So that is actually run through ADAC, the Alcohol Drug Abuse Council. And they actually can win cash prizes. So we're encouraging all of our scholars who are interested in that to participate. And they have been given that information throughout the week. And submissions are due by the beginning of February. So we're hoping to get a lot and to see some contestant winners from Middletown. Also, another opportunity that the middle school had to participate in is the Red Ribbon Week kickoff ceremony that was hosted by ADAC. And this took place at Chester Academy. So five scholars from each middle school were invited to participate in this field trip. This occurred Monday morning. They became scholar ambassadors for their different schools. And what they did was participate in panel discussions, red ribbon activities, and they listened to a guest speaker who shared their story and their experiences in becoming healthy and drug-free. And then what has happened throughout the week is those scholar ambassadors have been doing morning announcements, helping with our activities, and being a resource for other students who have any questions throughout the week. And here are some pictures from Twin, Jersey Day, and some pictures from Monhegan.
Hello, my name is Ashley Pace. I'm the dean of students for the 2024 cohort. At Middletown High School, we did the Midi's Film Drug-Free Competition, where students were able to submit like short snippets of basically filming drug-free. We have a lot of TikToks, and it's a competition, so we are still running through most of the film. But it was a great turnout. Students were able to wear, and in celebration on Monday specifically, they had to wear red. But just out of respect, a lot of students wore pink for Alejandra, so we loved it. We did Jersey Day as well. Yes, thank you, everybody. Had their pink on in representation. A lot of our students, we had stacks of our students literally just sign our pledge to just be drug-free. And they received, of course, a bracelet and a representation. They even received a little tag as well. A lot of them put it on their book bags. This is just example of the pledges that they signed. Just saying that they understand the dangers of drug abuse, that they understand they're gonna respect themselves to be drug-free and spreading the word to their family and friends about it. And this is just a quick video of just some of the images that were taken in the high school of our lovely scholars. It did happen during lunch, so there are some eating photos. Like I said, we did have a lot of students participate. And I just wanted to let you know that our honor society and just our freshman cohort really, really participated well. They really collaborated, and it was really a great opportunity for them to just celebrate and really just get involved in our community. That was the end. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, President Estrada, Vice President Mitchell Williams, and board members. Tonight, we're gonna give you an update on Middletown City Schools, particularly with the Twin Towers construction project. And we have with us Walt Hauser from KDNG, Kevin Sawyer from Triton, and Liz, you coming up, Liz? Liz is actually, she's the boots-on-the-ground for us over there, also with Bill. Bill's over here. So we just wanted to give you a quick update where we are now that they've actually started digging some of the dirt. So we'll give you some photos.
Thanks for having us this evening. And we know that time, energy, and attention is a little precious this week, so we're gonna be brief. If you have any questions, please jump right in. Just a reminder to everybody that there is some information available on the district website, and there is a project-specific email. So if there are any questions about what's happening, what's going on on site, anything comes up related to construction, please email construction@ecsdm.org, and we'll respond to that. We'll get those emails and can get answers out pretty quickly. So we reiterated some of the project-driving goals. But this is really around scheduling the work in such a way that we can get as much done as possible when scholars are not in the building, and then work around the instructional activities that are happening during the school year. And we'd be remiss not to say that working with the folks at Twin Towers has been amazing. The staff, administration, and scholars in the building are really making this project possible. There's a lot happening there, and without their cooperation, none of it would be able to occur. So really just want to give them a shout-out and say thank you so much for their cooperation and assistance in this project. So we're really just gonna talk about what happened over the summer and what to expect going forward through the school year. The project will continue past the end of the school year. But we just want to talk about what to expect, what you'll see happening on site, and what it should look like by the time students are out. So the areas that are really the primary focus are highlighted in red here. These are the new additions on the back of Twin Towers. The smaller box there is a multi-story classroom addition. And the larger box is the cafeteria slash food service addition. So that's really where the work is focused for the most part. And with that, I think I'm gonna turn it over to Kevin and Liz.
Good evening, everyone. I too want to just take a moment to acknowledge some of the folks that are involved in helping us with this project. Liz Pastore and the team from Triton Construction, who are onsite every day and night while construction activities are going on. And even more importantly is the coordination that takes place almost every single day with the folks that are, the administrators that are at the school district. And without their help, we certainly couldn't do all the things that we are doing. And I also want to say thank you, and we appreciate the efforts and the patience of the students and the staff that are also working in that building while all these construction activities are going on. Tonight, we wanted to talk a little bit about, briefly about expectations, things that we're going to see while, during the course of remaining balance of this school year. What we have in front of you is a phase diagram. And I just put this up on the screen because you're gonna see some of this terminology going forward. And I wanted to try and give you guys a sense of what they are and where they are. Phase 1A consists of the new classroom addition, but also part of the existing building, which is also getting renovated at the same time. Phase 1B is the area where the kitchen cafeteria, the new kitchen cafeteria is going to be, as well as the food service prep area in the lower levels. And then the other phases are various areas in the existing building, which we will probably be up here talking about with you guys in future meetings. There'll be areas that we're gonna be renovating in the future. So the planning part, some things that have already taken place, some things that continue to take place. We did a lot of work in the courtyard, that centered area of the donut that is now, it used to be full of vegetation and overgrown a bit, is now a turf area for an outdoor classroom. That will be, that will come pretty soon. We did things like asbestos abatement over the summertime because we want to try and do those types of hazardous material removals when students and staff are not in the building. in the building. We did a lot of site work for the new addition. Foundation walls began and will continue to go forward here for next couple of months. We did some window replacements of the existing building through the spring, summer, and completed it in the fall. Interior demolition of the existing classrooms, which I had mentioned earlier, on all the floors, including the what used to be the library downstairs. And then what you're going to see moving towards January is structural steel, the actual skeleton of the building addition going up, which is going to be really exciting because that'll really be the first thing that you'll see visually, that'll be beyond the ground level. So you'll see this like above the fence line as you drive by. A lot of utility line relocations and replacements, including a lot of new services, have started over the summer and will continue to go through the the rest of this year. And then Phase one A classroom renovations and the new classroom addition, which is Phase one B, will continue through August 24 through April and June of 26. So that's going to be a continuous, ongoing effort until those additions are finally done. And once that takes place and we can safely move into that building structure, then we'll start talking about various areas of the existing building that we're going to renovate at that time. Masonry walls will then be after the structural steel and concrete slabs are in place. So we're hoping to see that happen in February. And you'll probably start seeing some of the outside walls take shape in that time through the end of the school year in June. And we wanted to show you just a couple of pictures of what the rear of the building looks like now. We have done a lot of excavation in that area to accept the new footings and foundation work. We have located existing and or relocated or installed new utilities, like there was a gas line, there's electrical service, there's sewer piping and sanitary piping and all those types of things. So a lot of activity taking place. There's also here's more showing you more of the concrete work and the preparation that takes place, a lot of a lot of rebar, structural reinforcing that you see there, the steel, forms and foundations. And that picture on the right is your is the pit for your future elevator. All that has to be planned well in advance. Here's some more pictures of that's the center courtyard on the left. The center picture on the top is is what used to be existing classrooms in your existing building. You can see that we've cleaned that out nicely and we're actually starting to put back duck work and other mechanical systems and roughing, we call that, in preparation for the finished product. And then some in-ground other piping and such. And these are just a couple of pictures of what the end product will look like. This is from the field looking towards that is the cafeteria on the upper floor. And then on the lower floor is your food service library, which is also in the existing building, but in part of the renovation of one A. That'll be completed with the new addition. The picture of the library. Here's a typical classroom space that that we're going to be constructing, just to give you some examples of what the spaces will look like when we're done. And again, I just want to reiterate, there are email addresses out there. If there are any questions that the board or the community has, we check on these email addresses regularly and respond as quickly as we possibly can. And a lot of this information we post on the website. So if you have any questions, please check us out on the website and thank you very much.
Cool. Thank you. We'll go around the table, see if anybody has any questions. Mr. Moore? You're good. Mr. Mr. Perino?
Very exciting times at Twin Towers. I taught there for many years and had my offices there for many years. Have you encountered any supply chain problems thus far?
Yes, there are long lead supply chain items. We have incorporated many of them into our construction schedule. So we're anticipating the ones that we can. I'll give you, for instance, the electrical service that we're currently working with your utility company on. Will take about 13 months for us to get the equipment for it onsite. So we have to make sure that we have power for lighting and emergency services in order to turn over the space. So we incorporated that into the schedule to make sure that we're working together with everybody and it'll be completed at the time that we are anticipating.
About today, we have a four-year project, correct? Four years? Do you anticipate a significant delay in in the project because of these supply chain issues?
Yeah, so I don't have a crystal ball. So we have some ideas of what items, materials have lead items. And so we've for what we know, we think we've taken into account for the in the schedule. Something might pop up, but you know, construction is not a perfect science. But when they do, we're very proactive to work that into the program to minimize any schedule issues that we may have.
The only other question I have, did you want to say?
I just want to add, there is for the past couple of years, one of the long lead items has been HVAC equipment for various reasons. And I want to say Kevin and Liz worked with the contractor to pre-order most of the large mechanical units, even for the areas of renovation, which will be happening later on in the four year plan. So that stuff's already in board, right? It's headed up to the job site already. So we're in front of the things we we can see.
The only other question, what are we doing to minimize the disruption of learning in the building as far as noise goes and so on?
So I was spending a lot of time in the principal's office, making sure we address all of the issues that come up. We are scheduling a night shift, so we wait till the school lets out about 2:30. Then we start the noisier stuff that's going to affect the students, affect the teaching in the classroom. I have someone on my team that works till 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock at night with the contractors. We stop, we're doing exterior work and interior work. So the exterior work, we stop at 9:00 PM. I have personally gone and door knocked on all the neighbors to notify them that we are working this week, we are working outside, trying to get ahead of making sure that they understand that it is night work and we're doing our best to accommodate the students first and let them everybody in the neighborhood know that this is what's happening. I haven't had any complaints, so I everybody's been very patient and tolerable with the neighborhood noise. Interior wise, we are working with the principal. This week, she was able to accommodate us by moving the band students into the small gym area while we did some concrete work to remove some slabs so we can get in there and do the electrical gears, the conduits for that. But I do have a staff member that stays at night. He comes in at 3:00, works till 11:00, till we can handle those large items, the smelly items, anything that's going to have any dust or debris. We try and contain it as much as we can with protection as not to affect the classrooms or the students.
I know it's not easy, but I think you're doing the best you can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I hope to see you on the job site. I invite everybody, got some hard hats and safety vests if anybody wants to come join me, I'll walk you guys around, see what's going on.
No one knows that building better than Mr. Perino, who was my media specialist in that building in the late 70s. So we're talking 45 years.
Yeah. We've had a couple surprises with a 90-year-old plus building, so we're working through them as best we can.
Mr. Freddie Williams?
Mr. Perino stole my question about the estimated end date during a stint many moons ago in construction. I understand that waiting on materials, it was a way, way lower level than this. But I could see how timing can get thrown off a little bit, but it looks great. What you guys have done thus far is great. I'm a born and raised in Middletown and I've seen that building many times and, you know, a lot of the community is praising your work also. So great job and, you know, we appreciate you.
Thank you. Mr. Mitchell Williams?
I want to piggyback off Mr. Freddie Williams. Excellent job, excellent work. Looking forward to it.
Thank you. Yeah, one of the testaments of a good project is when you don't hear anything about the project. And so far, you know, we I don't think I just asked Mitch if he had heard anything and so far I have not from from community members, from no one. So that's a testament to the work that you guys are doing there. It looks this building, the way it looks on here and if it comes to fruition is I'll match this up against probably other school districts, high schools, let alone middle schools. This looks like a high school in about 70% of the school districts in New York State. So thank you very much for your time for coming out and giving us an update.
Thank you.
I don't know if, did you have any more stuff? No, you're good. All right, we'll move on to I truncated our Board of Education Committee reports. We will have a late executive session. We did not have an early exec because members wanted to go to the wake for Alejandra this afternoon. So we've truncated the committee reports to just be about the audit committee because we need to approve a couple of items for them. And then we'll do our other committee reports, including our NISBA reports at our next school board meeting. So with that being said, I'm going to hand it off to Mr. Tuttle, who's going to take over the reins for the audit committee with Ms. Tobias and not here today.
Thank you, Mr. Estrada. So for tonight, annually, we do two different audits. We have an internal audit and then we also have a what they call a single audit. The internal audit is something that we pick each year in the audit committee, where we pick a different department and then the auditor will come in and look at all the processes, procedures, make sure everything is flowing correctly, make sure all the policies that we have align with what we're doing procedurally. So this year, we did buildings and grounds and everything came out very nice with the buildings and grounds department. That goes with purchasing and all the all the procedures that they have inside of the buildings and grounds department. And just to go back a little bit, both of these audits before we approved them have been reviewed with the audit committee on September 30. We reviewed them and then the board has had access to these audits for a couple of weeks now. So for tonight, we need the internal audit. We need a motion to approve the 2024 internal auditors report and cap, which is called the corrective action plan as presented. I need a motion. Any discussion?
Moved by Mr. Mitchell Williams, seconded by Mr. Freddie Williams. Any discussion on it? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Good, thank you. And then for the second, financial statement and management letter and extra classroom audit, that's what they call the single audit. That's our big one that we do in the summer. That looks at all our revenues, our expenditures, looks at all our health plan benefit expenditures, and basically it gives you a summary where the district is fiscally at the end of the year. And and it looks at some of our internal controls. This year, they found no, no issues with any of our areas in the fiscal area. So we're our our staff does an amazing job over there in the business office, keeping track of all the numbers and volume of purchase orders that we do a year and the amount of salaries and benefits that we pay out. So I just want to give them an applaud. So we need a motion to approve the 2024 financial statement, management letter, extra classroom audit, and the cap as presented.
Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded by Mr. Moore. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Tuttle. When is our, do you know when our next RFP has to be done for auditors or no?
I think we just did one for the single audit. I think we have two years left on that one.
Okay.
And then the internal auditor, I think we have three left on that.
Okay.
I'll get that information for you though.
Great, thank you. So moving on, we are going to have a motion to adjourn into executive session, which will end our public session. We do not anticipate coming back into the public session. So I need a motion to adjourn into executive session. Moved by Mr. Perino.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Moore. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. I want to thank everybody for coming out this evening. Our next scheduled Board of Education meeting is sometime in November, November 7th, November 7th, which Mr. Mitchell Williams, he may not know it yet, but he'll be running the meeting as I will be on the beaches of Puerto Rico. For a wedding. So nevertheless, everybody have a great time. And again, thank you for all your support during this difficult time period and may God bless Alejandra Contreras's journey and may God bless her family. Thank you.